Ms. Carasola?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Hayward?
Here.
Ms. Parlamis?
Here.
Ms. Rendell?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Calvez?
Here.
Dr. Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Stevenson, if you could please lead us in the flag salute.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting in accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News on January 7th, 2025. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the Borough Clericum was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education Office in the Administration Building on the same date. I'm going to read our admissions statement today. The Glen Rock School District, founded on principles of education in partnership with a supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens. All right, to our first presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody had a nice start to the school year. It's so nice to see teachers and administrators and parents out there. We have our biannual presentation by Ms. Della Fortuna for our student safety harassment intimidation building self-assessment. So Ms. Della Fortuna, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Dr. Charleston. So as Dr. Charleston mentioned, we are mandatory, it is mandatory for us to report this data out twice a year. You'll also see some information about data trends and I'll address some of those trends in that presentation. So first is our school anti-bullying specialist. Each building has to have a school anti-bullying specialist. We do have two new specialists this year, Ms. Kristen Hyde and Mrs. Amy Tillison. So any new specialist must complete six hours of training. So they're currently doing their training right now. That includes the Anti-Bullying Rights Act, best practices for investigations, and identifying behaviors that qualifies HIB conflict or neither. The specialists on a whole will meet with me throughout the school year, a mandatory of a minimum of two meetings per school year. Training for staff, that usually happens in the beginning of the school year. I offer training to all the new staff at New Staff Orientation and it's mostly focused just on policies and procedures and how we report and conduct our investigations. The anti-bullying coordinator, that's me, provides resources to each building so that they can turnkey it to their entire staff. And that's usually done at faculty meetings with their entire staff. Additionally, anti-bullying specialists are available to answer questions from staff and students located in the building. So we're also mandated to have a safety team. In practice, that's usually combined with, combined with school climate. So you may see school climate and safety team. That usually consists of the principal, assistant principal, a teacher, the anti-bullying specialist is the chair of that team, and a parent. So the purpose of the school climate safety team is to foster and maintain a positive school climate. They're focusing on ongoing systematic practices to address any climate issues, including HIB. They meet at least twice a school year. They will review the data that's available regarding the HIB alleged AIBs. And they'll look to identify patterns of this and address it in their school to ensure that they have a positive school climate. Each year, we have to do a self-assessment. So schools evaluate its implementation of the Anti-Bullying Rights Act. Our self-assessment, we are doing this with our anti-bullying specialists and the building level administrators. Our overall score indicates that our schools are exceeding the state requirements. We also have to report out our trainings and programmings. This is reporting period two. So this is January to June. So you see very little trainings happening in January to June. That's, that's normal unless there's a new program rolling out or a new training. But most of the trainings are going to be focused in the first half of the school year because that's instruction or practice for staff to prepare them to implement some sort of program. So we might have a couple of trainings later in the school year if there is a new program that's being implemented to address, you know, school climate, but most of the trainings happen in the fall. Programs are, again, and this is different school by school, so programs or events, plans or a series of scheduled events and activities that may be taken towards a positive school climate. So again, this varies by school. So, you know, one school might be heavy with their programming in the fall and later in the spring. So we just report out those twice a year. So you'll see reporting period one next time I'm up here. The next part of this is our student safety data system report. So again, this is reporting period two, so January 1st to June 30th. I do have graphics to illustrate some of our trends over the year. As I've been doing in previous presentations, I do think it's helpful to look at those overall patterns. Okay, so our incident total for the past three years for reporting period two only. For incident total, that includes violence, vandalism, substance, weapons, and HIB confirmed. And then you can see it for the full year comparison. While you do see an increase here, I'm going to show you the overall total for the year and you'll see a different trend there, but this is the increase specifically just for this incident total. If you look at our other incidents leading removal, it'd be everything outside of that classification and you do see a decrease here with other incidents leading to removal. Again, this is reporting period two. And then you see the full year of utter, other incidents leading to removal for the full year and the trend is down in that category. Now, I do think it's important to look at the incident total plus the other incidents leading removal. I think this is a bigger and important data piece. Combining these two, we do see a trend down. Although I think it's really important to note that our building level administrative team, Mr. Ferrera, Mrs. Geraldo, Mr. Morelli, play a really important role in reviewing the student discipline data and trends. They're consistently analyzing patterns in student behaviors, looking at both frequency and types of incidents that occur. This allows them to make data-informed decisions to better support students and staff. Their goal is never just discipline, but to respond in ways that is restorative in nature, helping students learn from their mistakes, and integrate positively into the school community. So based on this data, we do have two new practices in this year. The building level administration dedicated in-school suspension space, designed for serious incidents that may require removal from class. And this space is supervised by certified staff to ensure that students remain in academic work. It also allows for reflection and accountability without sending students completely out of the school environment. Additionally, some of the other responses that our building administration has taken is redesign supervision model. So the administration has restructured how certain high-traffic and high-needs areas are supervised. So they've taken the data to see where these incidents are occurring and making informed decision about where we might need more, some more supervision for students to, to proactively prevent any of these incidents from occurring. And then students feel more supported throughout the school day with the additional supervision in these areas. Lastly, they're always continuing the process and looking at the counseling services that are being provided. So in tandem with discipline, they've also expanded access to the counseling support through the Wellness Center. Students involved incidents are often, often connected with counseling to address any underlying issues, building coping strategies and strengthening their decision-making skills. This overall approach that our building level is taking is really supporting the whole child and not just correcting the behavior. So I'm really confident that our building level administration is looking at this data in a very strategic way to make informed decisions about how to continually address any of these incidences. Last graph is our HIB confirmed over the past three years. So you can see we're trending down in reporting period two. And also trending down in our full year. Again, all of the things that I was talking about that our building level is doing to address our incidents and is also addressing our HIB confirmed. And at all levels, we practice the ruler method, which are infused through advisory periods, through the counseling, and through community circles at the elementary schools.
Thank you, Ms. Della Fortuna, and certainly thank you for, for taking the lead as the anti-bullying coordinator. I know it's a difficult, difficult job. But I also want to thank our teachers, administrators, our anti-bullying specialists for all their efforts. And also our parents that serve on the safety teams and our students. We have a lot of good student leaders that are also helping. But it's nice to see the data go down and we appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our first set of public comments is on the action item only. Again, you can state your name and your address and you have three minutes to talk and this is for action items. We'll open this public comments at 7:25. All right, seeing no members of the public for public comments, for action items, we can close at 7:25. All right, so for our first discussion for today, we have mentoring and personnel.
Yes, so Mr. Vedness gives us an update on our mentoring program and our, I would like to pay for it.
Yep, thank you. So as you know, every year when we have novice teachers who join the profession, they have to have 30 weeks of mentoring provided by a mentor in the district. This is something that, that is a state requirement. We have 11 teachers this year who, who need the mentoring. A couple of them are prorated. They, they started some hours in a previous district elsewhere. A couple of them are alternate route, which is, which is more of a commitment for the mentor teacher and for, for them. Most of them, though, are the, the standard CEAS certification. For the standard CEAS, the mentoring fee is, it's, again, these are dictated by the state, is $550, which is what the mentor gets for, for doing this. For the CE, the alternate, alternate route ones, it's $1,000. For the last four or five years, we've asked the board to cover that. In a lot of districts, most districts, the novice teacher is paying that. So that the people who are making the very, very least are, are shelling out of their pocket for the mentoring fees and we've, we've come to the board to ask you all, would you be willing to pay for that again this year? So that's what I wanted to bring to you. Either way, at the next meeting, we will have those mentors to be approved, but we're hoping that the board would be willing to, to cover that again. It'll be, it depends, there are a couple of people there, a couple of dates, those prorated ones we're still working out, but the total cost is going to be under $6,500.
Does anybody have any questions specific to the mentoring program?
All right, then we'll put it on the agenda.
One question, to be clear, these mentors are teachers within our own district.
Yeah, teachers or media specialists or whomever. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And they're in the buildings with the, the teachers, that, the novice teachers. And we, we pair them up deliberately, you know, teaching similar content, personalities that we think are going to mesh, things of, of that nature.
Excellent. Lois?
Just, is it in the budget of like this?
We can fit it. We can fit it into the budget.
Yep. I think this has been something that we've done year over year and it's been successful and well-received and happy to support it. I'm certainly happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Robinson.
All right, we can move on to general. Our first set of discussions is regarding some of these policies at hand. Dr. Charleston, did you?
In backup, the board has all the rationale for the, the changes for policies. There's also was a video provided for the board to review. This is a policy alert that comes from Strauss Estme. Strauss Estme is our policy advisor. If you see an M next to it, that's mandated. It's a policy we're required to have. If there is not one there, then it's recommended and we should have it. There are no suggested or optional policies in these several that you see here. There is one that we're abolishing. There is a new one, the sun protection one, and happy to review it. But the board should have all the thing in backup there for, for that. So any questions?
I have questions. Sure, you can go for it.
So I just have a recommendation, I guess, for the PO 14, or PO 174, which is legal services. So it says like who should be allowed to contact the board attorney. So I believe that all board members should have access to, I don't, I do believe that all, in this case, that all board members should have access to the board attorney. And I just want to give you guys my reasoning. So after reviewing the past two months of legal bills, it's come to my attention that our board president, sometimes our vice president, has engaged in like 30 hours, over 30 hours of legal conversations with our attorney. And unfortunately, very little of that has come to us. So it hasn't been shared with whole board. So in this time, at the same time, we've only received three very brief updates, email updates, so on 7/17, 8/11, and 9/5. So I've had multiple questions with very few of them answered. Very little's been shared enclosed in regards to those lengthy conversations. And I believe this contradicts the spirit of shared governance and it's certainly not in line with the transparency that our community expects of us. Additionally, when I asked for summaries of those legal conversations, I was initially told I could absolutely receive them by both the board attorney and board president, then later changed. And I was informed that since it wasn't required by policy or statute, that I was no longer entitled to receive them. So this shift in communication is troubling to me, especially because when the board members were equally responsible for the decision-making. And when we're given limited time or opportunity to legally, to ask these legal questions of our own, some of the questions I've asked are fundamental to how we operate, but they're treated as burden, burdensome. And my intentions are grossly mischaracterized. If asking questions is considered a burden, it only reinforces the need for broader access to legal counsel. The board attorney is not the resource of any one individual. They're contracted by our board, this board, but they're ultimately, they serve the public interest. All board members should have equitable access to legal support to fulfill their fiduciary duties effectively. I respectfully urge the board to reconsider how legal resources are accessed and shared, to put in place a process that ensures transparency, equal access, and accountability, in line with both the updated policy we see here and public trust that we have all been elected to uphold. If allowing all board members access to the board attorney could lead us to potentially frivolous legal spending, then I suggest we add a requirement to our current practice. And that is that the board attorney would provide the board with a comprehensive summary within 48 hours of any correspondence done between any board member and the board attorney.
I, I have less to say, but go ahead, please, Lois.
So I wanted to address the same section and I recommend that we choose that the board president will be responsible for, for accessing the lawyer. A, from a spending perspective, I think it's critical that there's one point of contact that controls the spending. But then, B, I reject everything that Sinead mentioned. I think there was, there's full transparency and full control. And every time I, I needed access to the board lawyer, we, we got it. So I think we should select the board president as the designated for accessing the lawyer.
All right. Okay. So I, I do find it odd that the policy that we have in, in force is the one that has been enforced since even you were board president. That there were no calls or attention to concerns with how the policy was carried out at that time. And I would expect that there would be no cause for concern at this time. Additionally, additionally, when you've requested to speak with the board attorney, you've been able to speak with the board attorney. Any, any information that was not, you know, delineated specifically in the fashion that you are asking for is always going to be in conversation and in discussion with our board attorney. So no, I guess we'll hear what the rest of the board has to say. No, no, this is just discussion. Yeah.
Usually it's motion, second discussion.
I would just be in favor of some kind of formal summary. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think we've, we've kind of talked about that a little bit. So that when there are things, it would be just helpful that everyone knows so that we're not just individually having to follow up or ask, just as a best practice. I like the idea of some kind of summary. I don't know that, I'm okay with the board president being the only person, but I think I would feel more comfortable if there was some kind of best practice of the summary.
I'm in favor of a summary of any kind of interaction the board president is having with the attorney. We don't have that. That's not a practice right now.
May I ask what it is that you're looking for in your summary? Just in terms of considering your-
Just, you know, as we review legal bills, we see that there are oftentimes email correspondences, phone calls, and, you know, we're all one unit. And I just think, I'm not even implying that there's any wrongdoing. I'm just saying I think it'd be a best practice to just have access to a summary of what was talked about or what was covered or what we should all know to make sure that we're doing our jobs.
We've had all of our conversations in, in closed session with regards to things that are attorney-client privilege. And there, there's, there's nothing that you, you don't know that has been put out. And there, the conversations, some of which are related to things that some of the board members here in front of us are, are bringing to me that require me to then have conversations with the attorney. So the conversations that I'm required to have with their attorney, if you will notice, have increased significantly over the last couple of months. Before that, when I, before, even with our prior counsel, I rarely had to have any conversations with their attorney. This is, this is my second year and as board president, I, I've rarely had to have conversations. So if there's a stark increase in the amount of conversations that I have to have with their attorney, it is for judicious reasons. It is, it is of critical importance. And I, I reject any, any other notion that I'm misusing legal counsel when it is required at this point. It is daily required.
Really not implying that. I'm really just asking for a summary so that when we look at the bills, it's kind of a little clearer on what that was, whether it was an email from me that was brought or whatever. That's all I'm saying.
So you're asking for me to potentially put details of legal discussions or privileged discussions into email form on, on, on our email service so that you can see them and, and look within 48 hours of every conversation that I have with their attorney? Is that what you're asking? I'm just, I just want to be clear.
I guess I'm asking for some kind of process, which does create a little more visibility, which you have been championing and I appreciate the transparency. I think that there's some lack of it in that respect, based on policy as it exists. We're not, not following the policy. We're doing the policy as it is written. I'm just, when Sinead, Rendell was giving her remarks, that kind of sparked something. When she said, you know, if we can't do it like that, then can we do some kind of summary? I don't know that the perfect thing is actually after everything 24 hours, but maybe monthly or maybe we have to do a better job in our closed sessions.
The, the board is the most transparent that it has been in years at this point in time. So, but again, we're going back and forth. This is a part of a discussion. I'm not trying to hog it. So are there any other board members that have anything to say here? Yes.
Going back to the original comment of like having the board president be the liaison representative, I think that's how we're, we're set up right now. Especially in this, like, there's executive functioning that the, the board president has to do. A lot that the rest of the board doesn't have to do. I think it would be disastrous to have nine people communicating direct questions. So I just want to kind of like nip that concept in the bud, that attorney-client privilege and relationship and understanding makes for efficient communication. And your task, once a year, if we vote you in or out, is to be able to communicate all that to the board. So I think that's why we put you in that spot and that's why you're doing what you're doing. I would have concern about documenting privileged material after that. So I'd be hesitant to, to formalize that right into a policy. I think that's, I think that's something that could come out as necessary. But if you mandate that process, you put yourself in a bad, a bad spot where you're creating the wrong type of paper trail.
Okay.
Tamali?
Yes.
I would like to echo Dan's comments as well. I think for the efficiency of the taxpayer dollar, it doesn't make sense to have everyone individually contact lawyer, the lawyer. And we do vote once a year to, for our board president and we entrust them to have those conversations. So for efficiency sake, I do think it is the wise course to have a designated appointee.
Yes, Ms. Stevenson?
I don't have much, I don't have much to add to a lot of that, but I am very comfortable with the way that we have been doing it. And as Christina said, we do vote for the board president every year and that is the person that we are entrusting to do this. So I am absolutely comfortable keeping this the way that we've, we've done it.
Agreed. I, I don't have much to add either and I, I think from a financial perspective and a trust perspective, et cetera. And we do have access to the bills if, if we need. So, you know, those bills have summaries on them, so I think that helps a little bit. And, you know, we went through this in July and everything that was on those bills were, was discussed, as far as I can tell. If we want to continue to do that, we can do whatever we want, but so far the system, I think, is working. So efficiency.
Okay. All right. Yes.
So just procedural question. So are we voting on selecting option or are we just?
This is, so this is a, for our Cal meeting, it's just a review and a first read of policies. I have multiple questions about P 0174. I did watch the, the brief from Strauss Estme and in Strauss Estme, it's specifically stated that, of course, yes, this is a mandatory policy. So mandatory meaning that we have to have a policy in our brief about legal services. The revisions, they said, were only specifically related to small, like wording things. But like they said, there's absolutely no difference in the policy that we are looking at for revision compared to the policy that was there. So I don't actually understand fully, you know, what it is that we're, we're, you know, looking to have another read on. And so I, I, I'm just going to be pulling this policy again to look and compare it in detail with what was there previously as well as what I see revised in front of me that does not look like minor revisions that Strauss Estme is reporting. Okay, so I'm going to actually make a motion to table P 0174 for another meeting to look. All right, so you have made the, so I'm making the motion and Ms. Calvez is seconding. And then if we could have roll call, I guess?
Ms. Carasola?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Rendell?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. All right. I think one of my other questions is the P 0143, it was saying that it's only applicable for like county boards or something like that. And so I was just, let me see.
It's the same language that we have today.
It's the same language, so it's not even really, okay.
It just doesn't apply to us, but it's the same language that we have.
Okay.
On that policy, it states and references the law, but should we clarify and say New Jersey law for that one? It's the first sentence.
Oh, you get to press the button.
I don't think that's necessary, because at the end of the policy, it has all the New Jersey legal references, so I think it's pretty clear from the legal references at the end that we're talking about the New Jersey statutes.
Okay.
Any other questions with regard, or concerns with regards to the alerts?
The board has to make a decision on the policy 533901.
Oh, the age?
In terms of the option, Dr. Charleston, is that what you're asking?
There's two options, yeah, the board needs to choose one.
So, is there a recommendation from the administration? Is there a preference from the administration?
The administration, well, we'd like to hear first what the board thinks, because the board makes policy, and then kind of get an idea, so help guide us.
Yeah, so the two options, we're talking about policy 5339 dot 01, which is about student sun protection as a mandatory policy, and it's just basically talking about protecting the kids from sun-related skin conditions, and ultimately, it's asking for one of two options, whether the board requires written permission from a student's parent to allow that student to carry or use sunscreen at school, or a school-sponsored function for all students in grades blank. Any student required to have written permission from their parent to carry or use sunscreen shall be monitored by school staff to ensure safety through the appropriate use of sunscreen. That's option A. Option B is sunscreen can be packaged as aerosol spray, lotion, or cream with fragrances. As such, the district prohibits the use of sunscreen that the principal or designate may deem harmful to students with asthma, or other respiratory ailments, or nuisance to students or staff members. I mean, I do like the idea, like, Mr. Zidimer just referenced, you know, parental permission, and having written parental permission is beneficial here. I don't personally see any problem there with supporting option A, which requires written permission from the parent, but what are your thoughts?
I actually prefer option B. I don't know, I think it's a little cumbersome to make students get written documentation to carry sunscreen.
I assume it would be part of, like, just the, your annual thing, like, we have to sign the permissions to have somebody, your kids, like, the media notice and things like that, so I think it would just be kind of like that, if it were to be this kind of thing, just to say, but...
I agree, and I see what you're saying, but there's oftentimes, there could be a substitute or an aide, or someone field day, it just could get a little cumbersome, having to continually go to the book of the lists, when I think we could manage with option two.
Yeah.
Just also reading in the back half of this, any students found to be using sunscreen in an inappropriate manner shall, and it continues on, this is like disciplinary standards around an over-the-counter product.
Yeah.
So, I'm not really certain that I understand the, like, the need and the space for this policy in general. Like, are we going to, if something has an SPF factor and it's a makeup product, are we going to, are we saying that students need permission to use makeup that have SPF in them?
So, I think, I think in the option B, it just says that sometimes, even point, I think it points to sometimes aerosolized or perfumed items and things like that, so I don't think that it's something that is typically harmful, but because it can have effects to certain people, that's why. But I think this is generally like a benign thing, so it's kind of, sunscreen, good, use it, please. However, it needs to be used. I don't think that this should be dramatic, but...
No, I'm just kind of questioning the nature of how this became a policy.
Strauss Esme.
So, yeah.
Yeah, Strauss Esme mandated, it's mandatory, unfortunately.
Sorry, I just got kicked in the sanity check.
Well, the state mandated, not Strauss Esme.
That's usually when my ears break out.
Based on the New Jersey law.
Just to say, I mean, we fill out a bunch of forms at the beginning of every year inside Genesis to approve for photos, to approve for other things, so I don't see it as a big deal. I think it's probably actually easier to make sure it's accurate if we do it that way and have the parents responsible to fill out the form and approve it, and if they put it denial in, then at least you know who might be allergic, or who's in need of it. So, that's, to me, a better approach, because we'll know. So, option A, I guess, is my summary, because of that.
Yeah. So, I guess, let's just do a straw poll in terms of where we are right now. So, if you are in favor of option A, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Before we do that, Dr. Charleston, did you say that there was some staff sponsor now? I thought you wanted to go to the board first.
We ran it by the nurses, and our director of nurses, and they thought that option A would be a little bit more burdensome for them, so they thought that option B was fine.
Okay. Interesting. Okay. So, I mean, we can vote accordingly.
Somebody want to make a motion to either option they want? So, you could start, I guess.
Yeah, so we can, I don't know, like, make a motion, like, it seems like option B is favored, so if we can make a motion to go to option B, and then, you know, see from there. So, I'll make a motion. Do we have a second?
Option B.
Actually, I cannot make the motion, because I'm going to say no. All right. All right, so I have made the motion, and then Liz Calves had seconded it. All right, so all those in favor of option B?
Or we could do a roll call, is it easier for you, Mr. Canales?
Yeah.
I just don't think either of these things make sense. We either have a list, or we're prohibiting aerosols, and it's the end of September. We could probably come up with...
Well, the motion to table would take precedent over the motion on the floor, so if you wanted to make a motion to table, you could, Dan.
Motion to table.
This policy in particular.
This is, yes.
I'll second that.
Miss Carisola?
Table.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Yes.
No, sunscreen, no.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calves?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries to table.
There are no other choices for the board on these rest of these policies.
Thank you. Onto the old business, so...
Oh, Damali, I have one comment on one policy that, before I move to the next order of business. Policy 2422, which is the statutory curricular requirements. Reading through it, it looks like there's a provision where parents must be notified for a signed statement of any part of instruction in health, family life education, sex education, is if it's in conflict with their consciousness, or their moral, religious beliefs. There's nothing I saw in this document that accounts for if a child is over 18. So, I would just, was wondering, I think, if it's over 18, I don't think we would require parental guidance, or parental signature for that. Specifically, I'm looking at page, it's hard to kind of reference it, but the fifth page in the policy, and it requires that parents have a signed statement, but if the child's over 18, I don't think we need to have the parent involved.
The only thing I would say is that many districts have an adult-student policy that speaks to the rights and responsibilities of adult students. I don't have it in front of me, but we should probably check, because there may be a separate policy that deals with the issue that you're raising in a more general sense.
Okay. I mean, maybe that supersedes it, and you don't need it.
Okay. All right. All right, so we can follow up on that offline. With regards to the old business and the NJSBA policy wellness check, so I forwarded you all, like, at the beginning of this year, I submitted a request to the State School Board Association to just take a look at our policies and to go through a policy wellness check, and so they came back recently. It took, it took really, like, eight-plus months in order to get this back, so I'm thankful that they were able to take a look at this for us, and I would like to do kind of, maybe an ad hoc committee that would be able to just review and go through the policies and the things, the deficiencies that they found in our policy handbook, and make recommendations to the board. So, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at that email, or what your thoughts are in terms of doing kind of an ad hoc committee on this. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I agree, and I think we need to fill what's missing, but the one policy that is missing, and I saw that other school districts have it, and actually, in Ridgewood and in Fairlawn, it's marked as mandatory, so I'm not sure why we are missing it, but it's the 8505 school nutrition policy. Also, I would like to add in regards to that, that we should ban any energy drinks with that policy, so to that point, I think we should add that to the policy wellness check, to make sure that we need to, if we need to edit, and if it is mandatory, we should edit.
Okay. What are, I guess, I'll ask if everyone who's interested in...
Yeah, I was looking at the list that they provided, the wellness check, I don't see that is missing, and I think it is mandatory, so...
Okay. I'm going to ask for those that are interested in doing the ad hoc committee, if you just send me interest, I assume, Mr. Cohen, that you'll send me interest, saying that you want to work on the policy wellness check, and then I'll just choose who's going to lead that task, and we'll get it done. Thank you. All right. All right, on to governance, district and board goals. All right. Let me... Actually, hold on. All right, so, Dr. Charleston, are you able to lead us through, I know you sent an email, but if you could lead us through some of your statements, or questions, or concerns regarding our district goal discussion?
Well, I put it back up, the administrative team met and provided revised goals. There were some concerns with some of the goals that the, that were sent out earlier, and I just provided two examples. One was the goal of students increasing test scores by 10% by April of '26, and as I shared in the email, we would not get those, results of those scores until August, so the April date wouldn't make that. And also, I shared that we didn't necessarily want to put additional pressure on our teachers and administrators to try to increase those scores by 10%. They already do really a phenomenal job in working with our students and preparing them. Our test scores are strong. There's always room for improvement, but I thought also that in the spring, it's a brand-new test, in a new format, and I thought that since that test isn't normed, that didn't seem to, I think, be a very, a fair goal to put that undue pressure on our, on our teachers. The other one was the, just as an example, was the financial goal to try to get, I think it was two, I guess...
Quotes?
Yeah, like, two quotes for our benefits, to determine whether or not we can change our state, from the state health educator plan. They, that's, we may get none, so to ask for two, we don't even know our claims rate yet, so that just didn't seem like that was a feasible goal. So, we went through that, we made some changes, and we provided that in backup for the board. The goals are basically similar, when the administrative team met, they made some tweaks to them, to, I think, align to what we originally sent as what we're going to work on internally, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Van Ness, who led that conversation, to kind of talk a little bit about the goals.
Yeah, so I met with administrators, and we looked at the goals that came out of the conversation you had at your board retreat, and wanted to make them achievable and practical for where we are. So, for example, the, I know the ask was to have something more specific and measurable, a smart goal, that kind of thing, so that's what we aim to do, is make that language working in that, in that frame of reference, but within, within the reference of that. So, for example, the goal that of 100% of elementary classes will implement ruler practices, they're already doing that, right? We've checked, we would have done that. So, we added to that with the, you know, and using the newly-curricular, revised curriculum materials, and expanding that from where we already are. The second elementary goal, I think the language was something, 90% of teachers will do at least two coaching cycles. Coaching cycles are actually really quite time-intensive on the coach's perspective, right? So, they're usually four-week cycles, and if you have 20 or 30 people in a building, time-wise, you can't do two full coaching cycles with 90% of your staff in the course of the year. It's actually, it's too much. So, that's why we wrote it down, as far as all of the teachers will engage in one type of job embedded professional learning with the coach, so whether that's a full coaching cycle, or a PLC, or a planning session, grade-level meeting, but so that 100% of the teachers are working with the coach in some capacity, not all of them are going through a full coaching cycle. The coaching cycle has a real, actual meaning of what that is. The third elementary goal, we just kind of tweaked that a little bit to talk about formative data collection tools, flexible group weekly during the win period, to really focus it on where the teachers are, and what we're doing, and kind of how we're going to collect that data. For the secondary goals, the goal of tier-two support in grade five, what we did is we really broadened that to looking at the work we're doing right now with INRS protocol across the middle and high schools, to really revise that, and we have some specific clear things in that list, clear referral procedures, timelines for intervention, pilot documentation, train-building level teams on the new protocols, is really where we're focusing on that. For the common assessments, using the language that we started with, 100% of core subject teachers, but we define that specifically as those four subjects, ELA, math, science, and social studies, will administer one department-wide common benchmark per marking period to track student growth against curricular standards. Teachers will review data in department meetings, planning meetings, PLCs with course-like colleagues, so really trying to nail that down, exactly what that looks like, and where we're getting that information. And then the last one, Dr. Charleston talked about, as far as 10% increase in math in ELA, we actually had a fairly good increase in sixth grade this year, but we don't know that till the summer, as he said, we don't get those scores until late. We wouldn't be able to do this by spring. So, the goal that we came up with is 100% of teachers will implement a targeted, standards-aligned tier-two support system for grade six through eight math, and enhance the six-through-eight language arts curriculum to improve student learning outcomes measured by data-driven instructional decisions, department meetings, planning meetings, team meetings, ongoing teacher collaboration. So, and we're in conversations as well with that tier-two extra support for math looks like right now.
All right.
And then for the finance and operations, before I turn it over to Mr. Canales, we've made a conscientious... made a conscientious effort to continue to reduce our surplus, our excess surplus, and we've been reducing it by a hundred thousand dollars each year to try to get it to be more manageable. So the goal would be to continue that process. I think when I started, we were at one point five, one point five, and so we keep on working it down. And a good number to get it down to might be eight hundred, seven hundred thousand. So it's a several-year process, but it puts the district in a better financial footing. I mentioned the first one there, which is the, the state health plan claims rate. So we should see the feasibility. Our claims rate is probably going to be very high, just based on what we've seen so far. So there, there might be no one that will, that will take us, but we'll certainly do the best we can to see that. And then number two, Mr. Canelis?
Number two is, was, was a bit loaded in terms of a, a building assessment and then addressing prioritizing and then start to assess those priority ones. So it's a bit of a bigger undertaking that is going to, one, involve engaging our architect and our engineers to do full building reviews, which we said, suggested we contract for that by October thirty-first of this year, and then have that assessments completed within three months. Then what we can do is, is we can evaluate the report issued by the architectural firm along with the estimated costs, and then we can start building the budget that would need, we would need to get to those types of items when we're addressing them. So I kind of see this goal as kind of, really kind of spanning two academic years, where this year we'll do the legwork, we'll have the building reviews completed, we will have all of the projects and costs, related to costs identified. We will then include in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, a, an allocation of costs to address those priority ones. And then that would be a subsequent goal next year to address the, those with the, the amounts funded in the budget. So, and I mean, the, the other concern is, is that it's, it's, there's a cost associated with doing the building reviews. It could be anywhere between six and ten thousand dollars a building, waiting for a quote from the architect. So as Dr. Charleston said, we just tweaked the goal to make it a little bit more achievable in terms of the reality of how such a building assessment would take place.
All right, thank you. I guess, what questions? Yes?
On that last one, thanks for pointing out, this is a district goal, and we're talking about a year, but it's a two-year project. So you, you start somewhere, and you made it achievable in the, in the first stage. That actually kind of stole, stole the point. Mr. Van Ness, you pointed out, I think, number two on the secondary, you said we won't have test scores by the end of, by the end of, during the time period. That'd be interesting. Is that, was that the point?
So the test scores in the spring are not released until August. In fact, the student individual scores are not going out until next week, the report. So we just don't have the data by, in April.
So that's like another, another two-year stretch, so that's, that's something that we can never do if we stuck it between a single year. So would there, would there be a way to just consider if there's a way to adapt that goal to be able to tackle, tackle a request like that if you took a twenty-four-month period on it?
I would, I would caution putting a percentage on how our students score. I think that, like I said earlier, I think our teachers do an outstanding job. Our students are working hard, our administrators do well. Like, I think we're putting a number on, on tests is, I'd rather attack it the way we are, which is through instruction in the classroom versus the result of a single test. I think that's not good for morale. I, I think that's, I wouldn't recommend it.
So could it also be, and, because I think, based on what I hear you saying, Mr. Corey, is that if you're looking for a result, or say, I don't know, let's say we have eighty-five percent of our students achieve, and we're happy with that, but, you know, maybe we're looking for a higher percentage, and if we're not achieving that, then we turn around and we, we strategize in, in terms of like, what is it that we need to be doing additionally to support the students and being able to achieve to the level that we're hoping that they achieve to? And it's not something that's so much punitive, or putting our teachers in a place where we don't feel like they're supported, or that the morale is poor, or things like that. Those kinds of pressures and that kind of downward pressure is, is, is negative, and I think that we can definitely adapt to make sure that that is not the type of environment that we're creating while also looking for, you know, continued sustained improvement for our, our children at multiple levels. Like, that's what I got from what you're saying, Dan. Is that what you were saying, or?
In, in a bit, yeah. Dr. Charleston, that, that's a helpful explanation, though, better than to say it's, it's hard to do in that time period, to be supportive of the whole child qualitative reasoning and all that.
I think the way we wrote the goal was to get to that point, but we do it from, like I said, inside the classroom with meeting, the needs of, of the students, and providing those supports. And you could see there that all the teachers will implement a targeted standards-aligned tier-two support program, right, for students in grade six to eight. And so I think by doing that, we'll better prepare our students for the test, right? So not necessarily focus on the outcome of the test, focus on what we do to prepare them for the test. That I think is better.
And if I may, one of the other things that we try to do when we're writing the goals is we're writing actionable goals that, that we can be held accountable for our actions, right? These are the things that we are doing. We can't always be held accountable for the way a student performs on a test, or what this brand-new test is going to look like, or any, those things are beyond our control. But can we do these things and can we continue moving it forward? We, we can, and we, and we will.
No, that, that's helpful. My whole view was, long after we're all sitting on the dais, how does this goal set up for the next two and three years? So thanks.
Yeah, and, and to that point, it builds on the goals from the last several years. You know, we were here talking about using assessments to drive instruction and using assessments to do tier-one supports, and now we're talking about tier-two supports. So it's, it's building on prior goals and moving us forward to future goals as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
More so for, for the elementary, where it is, I think part of what we want to do too, as a school system, is to not just teach our children for a test, it's to teach them for life and to give them the skills that they're going to need to be successful in this world. And I think the way that this is written, where we're supporting the teachers, we're providing opportunities for the teacher in order to help our students to be the best that they can be. So I think the way that this is written, with not putting a percentage on it, is, is a more, is a better way to go.
All right. My, my one question with regards to initiatives with like AI and computer science and advancing there. I know, Mr. Van Ness, that you mentioned that some of these things were already being implemented at multiple levels throughout the school. Are you able to kind of tell me what, where AI and, you know, advanced computer science and things like that would be able to fit into this, into these goals?
Dr. Robinson, I don't have that with me right now, but I can certainly look into it and get back to you on that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? One moment, this just disappeared. Yes?
Just on the section of the board goals, so this is the district goal, what is the plan for the board goals?
When you're saying like, so board goals, district goals, we could do, we can do self goals, like if we want to have just something within ourself, like within our individual group, we can do that. The, the mandatory part is, you know, like the district goals, like this kind of process. So if, if you have things that you want to weigh in, and those, the, the things that we had discussed in our, our, our last meeting, this is where this gets implemented. So the information that, that we had, Dr. Charleston took a look at some of those things and then made, you know, the recommendations with his team, and that's how we end up, you know, with this document that you see in front of you. So if there's additional things that the board, you know, wants to see as part of the district goals, then this is the way that we work collaboratively to, to get there.
Yeah, I was just wondering, we'll, we'll have a separate-
Yeah, we can do a separate, we can definitely do a separate.
Okay.
Did you have something? All right, we can do a separate one. All right. And I'll say, actually, I'll make it part of the closed session for our, for our next one, to have, to go over self eval, board self eval.
Yeah, like, like a goal to, you know, evaluate all the policies or complete, like to make sure.
Yeah. What? We can do that, however, however it needs to be, however it needs to be.
I believe it is a public session conversation. Mr. Zidderman, do you agree?
Yeah, if we're talking about setting board goals, that's generally a public discussion.
Oh, that was self eval. I was talking about the-
Oh, the self eval?
Yeah.
Generally, that's also public, but I can certainly weigh in and see specifically what we're talking about. There may be certain aspects of it that perhaps fit into closed session, but generally it's public.
Okay. All right. Any other, any other discussion for governance? All right. Seeing nothing on IMP, special services, management community, and then on to business, fiscal.
So field work has been completed for our two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five audit. We are really in a holding pattern at this point to get the state's estimates on post-retirement benefits, and then we should be ready to issue our reports, which will come out to the board as soon as we receive them. And then we'll bring the attorney in, hopefully sometime in late November, early December, to go over the audit with the whole board.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Did you mean the auditors, not the attorney? Bring the auditors in to go over-
Bring the auditors in, I'm sorry, did I miss me?
Just for clarification.
My apologies.
Okay.
Mr. Zidderman's attendance is making-
I'm a little nervous there for a second.
All right, so for operations.
Just two updates. So we were able to get our early childhood program playground completed for the first day of school. However, part of the storm management, stormwater management system requires a particular part to be specially designed. We are waiting for that part to come in. Once it comes in, the ground will be closed, the little bulldozers will go away, and then we'll just hope that grass grows underneath the hay. So we're, we're in great shape there, and the kids have been out there enjoying the playground, so it's been, it's been nice to see. And lastly, our, our other summer project, Coleman Roof, the roof is substantially complete. The only thing remaining is the flashing, which we are waiting to come in. Once the flashing comes in, it's a quick install, probably done after school or on a weekend.
Thank you. And, and thank you for all the work on that. I know it's been a long-going project, so glad the kids enjoy. All right. Other questions or comments regarding operations? All right. Can I get a motion to discuss resolution B one? All right, Mr. Corey, seconded by Ms. Parlamis. Any comments or questions regarding the resolution B one, which is related to the refunding of the bond ordinance? Any questions? I know this is something that we discussed at our last meeting, that was going to be presented as a resolution for this one meeting, and the refinancing of the bond, bond is a, at a savings of, what is the, the savings again?
Just, so the savings is approximately one point three million dollars over the final six years, or a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year.
Thank you. All right. You have a question?
I want to thank Mr. Canelis and Dr. Charleston for tolerating my flurry of questions on this. Saving this kind of money is mandated, so the state did something well here. If rates continue to drop down, that's an opportunity for us to then, again, save money. This is debt that the district has outstanding, and we're just continuing to roll it and manage it. So really pleased with the advisors that you have and putting this all together in this way, so that it makes it easy and transparent to work through this two-page resolu, three-page resolution to approve. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. If you're able to call roll, please.
Ms. Carisella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Rindell?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calves?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Are there any liaison reports or other reports that anyone has? Okay. And now on to public comments for agenda items only. We'll open public comments at eight eighteen, and you will have three minutes to speak. Please say your first and last name.
Elizabeth Carr, two-three-one Hamilton Avenue. I just have a couple of statements to make on behalf of your agenda items. Since I started attending board meetings in two thousand and six, it's always been the board president whom, again, I will remind you all, you elected with confidence to represent the rest of you. It's always been the board president who corresponds with the borough attorney, and I want to thank those who acknowledge that financially having everybody have access is not feasible. I'm truly sorry to hear that attorney fees have gone up in the last few months, and I hope that whatever is going on is resolved with the best interest of the students and staff, because I will remind you again that that's why you're all here. I do not think that everyone needs to have access to the board attorney. With regard to the sunscreen policy, speaking as a school nurse, I, I, I'm flabbergasted at this policy, to be honest with you. It doesn't address who applies the sunscreen, where it's held specifically, and someone's backpack. I really, I know that you tabled it, and I really think that I'm going to think about more questions. It hasn't come up in my district yet, but I know that if this is presented to me, I would not accept it. The two optionals are actually optionals and not required by any, for anything, so you, you don't really even have to consider that. But what I would consider in great detail is the age of the child that is, it's being applied to. You don't want, I mean, you don't want a child of early elementary applying their own sunscreen, and then whose responsibility does it become? The nurse or the teacher? Well, I wouldn't want, as, as a school nurse and as a parent, I wouldn't want a teacher applying stick sun lotion to my child. I think that puts them in a very peculiar place. And then you're putting an onus on a school, on the school nurse who is potentially taking care of life-threatening illnesses. So I don't really know how you can amend this policy, go back to Strauss, Sessmey, go to your, to the attorney, and present these as options that you might want to consider. So, thank you.
Thank you.
San Givory, one thirty-one Fairmount Avenue. Okay, I think it's the fourth time I'm coming, and every time I'm coming, I get very disappointed. I don't know what's happening in the board. Your bills are going up because some board members are supporting current leadership blindly, and I've watched that for over maybe two years or three years or so. This needs to stop. You need to start paying attention to this district, the needs of this district, rather than blindly supporting the current leadership. The current leadership, you know, this divide and rule policy is very old. You need to work as a board together and have faith in the board president that you all elected. I didn't see anyone saying no. Everyone said yes. The board president always had the right to call the lawyer to safeguard all of you, to safeguard this district. to safeguard this district. Second guessing what is going on with the, with the president and the attorney, it just, beyond my twelve years of what I learned on the school board, from the best people that I work with, I'm just, it's just amazing what I'm hearing right now. I can tell you right now, intimidation will not work. Your board of head president is a very strong person and doing a fine job. You know what? Those days are gone when few people were able to guide her in this direction, that direction, those days are gone. She has learned a lot from her mistakes. She's a much better president, she's a much better person on the board right now. And I think under the current leadership, this district is in big trouble. You need to take some action, some compromise, and move this district in the right direction. We are going nowhere. Our rating is really, really down. When I left the board, our rating was close to ten or twelve. Look at the rating. I haven't seen any presentation on the curriculum right now. What did you do in this year? What new books did you approve? What enhancement have you brought? What technology initiative you have done? I heard about AI. AI is a very large subject to bring it. Do you have any tools? Any presentation? Nothing, not a single word. I don't know, I think I just don't want, I have some words, but I don't want to use it because I think you guys are all very respected people, that's why you are here. Please cut your act straight, do the right job, do why you are here. I don't see that right now. You need to work together.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nick Di Gregorio, and while I no longer live in Glen Rock, I did grow up on fifty five Rodney Street, and my six year old daughter and four year old son now attend Academy of Our Lady in town. They can also be found running around on the Starbucks patio on Saturday mornings while mom and dad desperately try to caffeinate for the weekend. So you can definitely say that Glen Rock remains a very important part of my life and will always be my favorite small town. As much as I'm here tonight as a citizen who loves Glen Rock, I'm also here as a veteran who loves his country. In the wake of nine eleven, I served my country in a time of war, and in the wake of Pearl Harbor, a Glen Rock World War Two resident named Thomas Hawkins served his. I was lucky enough to make it home while Mr. Hawkins sadly was not. And so I feel that I have a duty to speak on behalf of those gallant servicemen and servicewomen who cannot offer their voices tonight. I believe a nation's moral goodness can be judged on how that nation treats its veterans. While the Vietnam era was not our finest hour in this respect, it seems clear that we as Americans have returned to a place where we honor the sacrifices of those who have been willing to fight and to die on our behalf. But Vietnam should serve as a solemn lesson on where this nation could go if we neglect to educate our children well. Surely none of us in this room wishes to return to a time where our Vietnam, or excuse me, where our veterans are spat upon or otherwise harassed for putting on the uniform. And what better way for us to never again return to that disgraceful blip in our history than to give our local children a fine role model in Tuskegee Airmen Thomas Lawson Hawkins, who once walked the halls of Central School before going off to war for us? In renaming Central School to Hawkins Central, generations of our kids will learn about this local hero and his willingness to serve his country when genuine fascist oppression threatened to end the world as we know it. America is not perfect, nor will it ever be so. So this was no doubt Thomas Hawkins' experience as a black American living his life in the early twentieth century. And yet, Mr. Hawkins chose to fight anyway. Perhaps that is the lesson we should all keep close to our hearts, that while America will never be perfect, it will always be worth fighting for. Surely this would be a worthy lesson for the many future generations of Glen Rock children who would have the privilege of passing through a Hawkins Central School. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
And on that item, I would also, I mean, it's just an opportunity for you to mention, I know that Mr. Cole and Mr. Jackson submitted the intent, or submitted the question to Ms. LaCroy. So at this point, really, it's just following the process of the policy that's, that we have formulated, like as a new process, and so it's going to go through the process. And so we look forward to, you know, tracking it with the rest of the members of the community. So thank you. Are there any other public comments on agenda items only? All right. All right, seeing no public comments, we'll close our public comments at eight twenty And at this time, I just need a motion to adjourn. All right, Ms. Caracella, seconded by Ms. Calve. Seconded by Ms. Calves. All right, all those in favor? All right, all right. Any opposed?